Here is your continuance, we're going to get right to those. Item P-34.
P-34, we have, we do have publication in the March 5th, 2025 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The title is "Planning Development Economic Growth." Item P-34 is PDE 250109. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan for the Elite 52 PD Plan Development. This is a request for a continuance to a date uncertain.
Will it be approved?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Stark, you're not here? Mr. Stark is not online. Okay. P-35.
I'm just thinking, for the record, I guess we need to reflect that you were not chairing this morning, correct?
Yes.
No, he was chairing.
Okay. She was online, got it, sorry.
Yeah.
On P-35, we have proof of publication, May 7th, May 14th, May 21st, and May 28th of 2025.
Item P-35 is PDE 250166. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Ordinance Number 2409, Contracting and Expanding the Boundaries of the Two Rivers East CDD. This is recommended for a continuance to the July 15, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Dade City at 1:30 PM.
Move for continuance.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. P-36.
P-36, again, publication occurred in the May 7th, May 14th, May 21st, and May 28th, 2025 editions of the Tampa Bay Times.
P-36 is PDE 250173. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Ordinance Number 2140, Contracting and Expanding the Boundaries of the Two Rivers North CDD. This is also recommended for a continuance to the July 15, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Move for continuance.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? P-37.
And again, this item was published in the May 7th, May 14th, May 21st, and May 28th, 2025 editions of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P-37 is PDE 250184. This is an ordinance amending Pasco County Ordinance Number 2141, Contracting and Expanding the Boundaries of the Two Rivers West CDD. This is also continued to the July 15, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Move for continuance.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And item P-38.
P-38, we have proof of publication in the April 16th, 2025 edition Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by certified affidavit of certified postings, certified mailing site postings.
Item P-38 is PDE 250112. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, Providing for a Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Future Land Use Maps 2-15 and Sheet 13, Changing from AG Agricultural to IL Industrial Light on Approximately 10.09 Acres of Real Property Located in the South Side of State Route 52, Approximately 1,274 Feet West of Aaron Cutoff, and Providing for Additional Text Amendments as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for Repeal or Severability, and an Effective Date. This comes to the Board of County Commissioners with the Recommendation to Approve from the Planning Development Economic Growth Department and the Local Planning Agency, Approve the Proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Adopt the Ordinance by Vole Call Vote.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone need a presentation from Zep?
Just a question, Chair.
Okay.
Chair, we have lib local provision coming in on this at the second vote.
Yes, they should have the lib vocal worked into it.
Okay.
And it'll probably appear on the zoning matter to follow.
Right. Just getting the head up.
Okay. I do see the applicant's representative here, but let me just see if there's any public comment to this. Any public comment to P-38?
We have no one signed up in advance, nor anyone online.
Okay. We have a motion. Will it be approved?
This one's a roll call.
This is a roll call, okay.
Roll call.
Got a motion, got a second? Roll call, please.
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Wakeham.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 3 Chairman Starky is not present. District 5 Acting Chair Mariana.
Aye. Okay. Item P-39.
P-39, we have proof of publication in the May, I'm sorry, Aug, April 30th, 2025, May 7th, May 14th, and May 21st, 2025 editions of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P-39 is PDE 250130. This is an ordinance establishing the Acacia Fields Community Development District Pursued to Chapter 190 Florida Statutes, Providing for Authority and Power of the District, Providing for Powers and Duties of the District, Providing for the Board of Supervisors of the District, Providing for the District Budget, Providing for Functions of the District, Providing for Miscellaneous Provisions, Providing for an Effective Date. This comes to you with a Recommendation from the Planning Development Economic Growth Department to Adopt the Ordinance by Vole Call Vote.
Okay. Anyone sign to speak to this item?
We have no one signed up in advance, nor online at this time.
Okay. Anyone here? No one's here to speak? Okay. Will it be approved?
Aye. Roll call.
Roll call vote?
District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Wakeham.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 3 Chairman Starky not present. District 5 Vice Chairman Mariana.
Aye. Passes. Item P-40. David, if you have the...
I don't need to do it, there's no, it's only the 10th, sorry. Continuance, sorry.
So, as a zone, I got two continuances for the zoning, so I need approval from both?
We have, yeah, on item P-40, this item did not have appropriate publication, so is, cannot continue today.
Sure, yes. So, item P-40 is PDE 257867. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Swami Ayan LLC, was the Chapel Professional Center. This is a change in zoning from PO2 Professional Office District to a C2 General Commercial District. The request is to continue the item to the July 15, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
We have a motion?
Will it be approved? Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And P-41, another continuance?
Yes, here too, we do not have appropriate posting and advertising for today.
Item P-41 is PDE 257869. This is a zoning amendment, James A. and Cheryl L. Canatier, Powerline Road Rezoning. This is a change in zoning from an AC Agricultural District to an AR Agricultural Residential District, and AR Agricultural Residential District to an AR Agricultural Residential District. This is a request to continue the item to the July 15, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
The motion continue?
Move to continue.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And that will take care of that part of the agenda today. We're going to go back to committee reports. Commissioner Wakeham.
Short and sweet, Chair. Short and sweet. The one big thing, I don't have any update on committee reports, but just wanted to share that broke ground on YMCA on Bridgefield Downs next to Bay Care last week, which is pretty fantastic. 300 new assortment of jobs for all different ages, coming in roughly 45,000 square feet, full aquatics, fields, you name it, it'll be their flagship here in Pasco, which is pretty cool. And they wouldn't be able to do it without Bay Care giving them a 30-year, basically interest-free loan to purchase the land. So, just great partnership all around, and shows Bay Care's commitment to Pasco's health and wellness of all ages. And when it comes time, they're planning on opening summer of 2026, so when it comes time, we'll be sure everybody gets an invite, and I hope everybody will come and celebrate the facility. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Yeager.
Okay, so not much on the area of aging for committee reports. They're just still waiting on funding, and they're funded until June for certain programs, and just really hoping that things come through the state and federal government. For my commissioner items, I was at the, same as Commissioner Oakley and Commissioner Starky. We were at the Pasco County Fire Rescue Station 17 ribbon cutting, so that was great, absolutely beautiful. So, next slide, this was the firefighting graduation ceremony. We had 26 graduates, so that was awesome. And this was our Moon Lake pop-up pantry. We fed 308 families and 31 new families, which continues to amaze me because we have a signup sheet, how we keep bringing new families in. So, and the need is just very, very dire out there. The next slide, this is just a fun one. There's two slides to this one. I went to the White House to celebrate the Gators' national championship for basketball, so that was pretty cool. And the gentleman over there on the right side, he's, he's 7'9", so he's ginormous. So, that was a really great and fun experience. So, that's it, District 4.
Okay.
Yeah, he's huge.
Seven foot nine.
Yeah.
County Administrator.
Stand next to him, Chairman.
Oh, wait, no, wait, you know what? The 7'9" guy's not in the photo. I'm going to email it to them, but I want you to, I want you guys to see how big he is, but go ahead and continue.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just real, real quick, two fast items. One, I'm happy to announce that our Building Construction Services Department recently received accreditation from the International Accreditation Service. This is actually a pretty big deal. It recognizes the quality and consistency and the commitment to excellence of our BCS group, so we're very, very proud that this, they were awarded this distinction, and they're the only county in the nation with a population of our size, between 500,000 and a million, to receive this honor. So, your building department's doing a lot of great things. There are other counties and cities within the state of Florida. It's easier to get when you're smaller, I guess, but we're larger, we're growing, and at the clip we're growing. We're very, very proud of BCS and the things that our building official and administrator have done over with that group, so.
Rock stars.
That's a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment.
The only other thing I just wanted to mention to the board, it's just more of an informational piece, is we received approval from the Department of Environmental Protection to embark on a trial for the use of our bottom ash as a concrete additive with CEMEX up in Brooksville. This is exciting. It represents a wonderful way that we can reuse the ash that we have coming off of the facility, which ultimately, if it takes off, could lead to some cost avoidance for us, as well as reduce, reduce the costs of expansion and not having to expand the landfill. So, Solid Waste Team is doing a lot of great things, so I just wanted to give them a shout out.
Mike, I'd like to tumble it, just for a quick second, too, because that is such a great opportunity for us. Those landfills between the size of the space, the amount that the expense that we take into there, the liability habit depicts in concrete is phenomenal. I know you mentioned one plant up in Brooksville, but what about all the other cement plants we have right here to encourage them to get it? I mean, we should be able to take it as it gets processed, stockpile it, when it gets ready for a load, take it to one of them, just drop it off. Show them the charger, far, just drop it off and let them take it and use it.
Yeah, this is a pilot right now, and so I imagine the scale and the operation of where they wanted to do it, it's being done there in Brooksville, I assume for technical reasons on CEMEX's part. But once we enter, you know, if it does take off, if proves viable, we'll have agreements, and there'll be, there'll be things on how to transport and do the things that perhaps you're asking, and we would bring that agreement back to the board. But right now, this is the pilot. It's exciting just to get the environmental approvals to go, to go and do this, again, just like for road base, right? So, our Solid Waste Team continues to innovate and just do a lot of great things for our citizens.
Now, we haven't done much with road base, though, have we?
No, it's a little difficult because of the parameters that were put on it by the environmental protections, but it doesn't matter, I mean, it's still there, it still, it still literally paves the way.
Yeah, elevations make it tough because it's got to be above the water level at a certain point, I get that. But yeah, I think it's a great opportunity, and I tell you, we could save a whole lot of money for years down the road, so.
The cost, the cost of constructing a new landfill cell is well over $20 million.
Yeah, so I mean, literally, every one of our people, we can get together, be great.
That's all.
You want to say something?
I have to show you, because the wrong picture was on there. Hold on.
This is 7'9".
7'9".
Oh, my gosh.
He's so tall.
How big was he?
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, like, and to just see, like, his clothes, how, like, things are just, oh, yes, it was crazy. Yeah.
Wow.
So, anyway, that's a picture I wanted to show you, I didn't realize that wasn't in there, but anyway, he's huge.
So, anyway, how was the trip to DC?
You know what? It was chilly and rainy, and it was 58, so the weather wasn't great, but other than that, it was good.
Did you go to hang around the president for a little bit?
No, I didn't get to. They moved it inside. It was supposed to be outside, so I'm happy we got there early because if we didn't, there were people in the hallway that couldn't even see, and they were watching it on their phones. So, I was very thankful, I had a close spot.
Okay, okay. County Attorney Office.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
The clerk has nothing to present.
All right, I don't see Chase, anyone from the sheriff's office in? All right, so I get, go to my pictures. This is, I think, some debris that's in the canals. I got a few pictures, I think. Most stuff in the canal, they're all boxed down below. Another crate that's there.
Oh, wow.
More stuff down there.
About to go.
Got it marked off where it's at. So, I know we've talked about getting this stuff done, these things just come over yesterday and the day before, but somehow we got to work to redo this. I think there's more pictures coming up, too. Some more stuff that was found in the water. There's just a Facebook post, go back to that, right, if you would? So, it's just one of our local people, I'm looking for a company who cleaned my canal from the hurricane. So, we shouldn't have people spending money on that, we should be able to take care of this one way or the other, if we could. Next one. This is something that we've talked about before, but this is the first time I saw it actually posted. Joe Pasco, a real good guy, from the Sea Ranch area. You can see all the grass clippings that go in there. Now, it has been probably seven years, maybe eight or nine years even, since when I've asked for to change what we do on our canals. Every canal home in the backyard should be able to put all the impervious they want. If you go all over Europe, et cetera, if you go look to other areas, whether it be asphalt, whether it be concrete, pavers, et cetera, there's no vegetation, the waterways stay clear, like, in Switzerland, Lake Geneva there?
Yeah.
There's like very little grass anywhere in the bottom part of that whole thing. All the rainwater comes from down below, hits the asphalt, goes out, et cetera. The water stays pure, drinking water condition all the way through. Grass and all the nutrients that are in it cause us trouble. I'm going to ask that we do this again. Let's go wave for anybody in the back, I mean, I need this to come back from County Attorney's Office and staff to go draw it up, but anybody in a canal home, any waterfront home period that wants to put something in the back that's pavers that, above the water, we should allow it. I was just at Heritage Springs, they're taking all their canals, or all the ponds around it, and they've kind of redone it. They're now putting rock there, there's no grass, not even dirt, to the very edge, just so the grass doesn't go down and get caught up in that. It's very critical for our water quality, so, Mike, if you can bring something back to us, work with the County Attorney's Office, it's, with all the stuff we're doing for water quality, this is like a critical thing, and that just kind of really shows it better than ever. Next pictures. I was at the firefighter thing as well. Thanks, Pam, for sending that one picture out for me. There's some more debris that's in the canals, most of people waiting to get picked up. That was just an email I got this morning. All right, and all of all, I'd just like to say, with the CBGDR program, the way staff has put this together and presented it, I think we've just got some tremendous opportunities, so as we come forward, looking forward to it all. And that's all I got.
Do you want to mention PHSC baseball? I read your thing.
All right, so yeah, PHSC baseball wins the national championship. I'm going to try to get them in for the June 17 meeting to a resolution for them, but they were down 7 to 3 in like the seventh inning, and they come up with two grand slams and win 11-7, held it off, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Great championship, great things going on. I know they were thanking Whitlakucci for helping sponsor to put lights on at night, so they had practice at night, but just, it's a great accomplishment for the area, so thank you, Commissioner Wakeham, for bringing it up, but, you know, looking forward to that resolution, it'll be a great day.
I didn't know if it was appropriate to be too salt and moon, congratulate Wesley Chapel, shall we wait a bit, Mr. Yeager?
Yeah, can we wait? Just kidding. Pasco proud, Wesley Chapel did great.
Commissioner Wakeham, go ahead.
No, and then, you know, congratulations to West Chapel High School on their division championship, and it's what, three in the last five, I think, is what it is?
Yeah, two of them were us, yep.
Robert Rich had a great run, too, but anyway.
Athletics are phenomenal.
Good games, good games here in Pasco County.
And I'll tell you, just a great place to live, work, and play. When you get kids to play in sports, they're out of trouble, they're doing great things, so we got to keep on doing what we can to help our great Parks Department keep on doing the great stuff they're doing, so. All right, we're adjourned.
And do we sing a half birthday to Pam?
Oh, yeah. Oh.
My day's done, but Yeager's Pam, back there, it's her birthday.
Start it, Seth.
Ready?
Ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Pam. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, you're welcome.
We're adjourned.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611. For its abundance of preserves, parks and conservation areas as varied and